Southwest ISD community, thank you very much for joining us tonight. We appreciate you being with us for our town hall. I can't tell you that this is not the only one that we're going to do. We do plan to make, do several other ones of these town hall meetings, and we'll let you know on dates and times for those so that we continue to share the information as it comes out. My name is Jesse Garcia. I'm your executive director for district and community relations, and I'll be your host tonight. I'm also joined tonight by our superintendent of schools, Dr. Lloyd Verstappen. If you could give him a wave, sir.
Hello, everyone.
Also, we have our director of safety, Mr. Mark Figueroa. And, and we also have our director of health services, Ms. Valerie Maldonado. Mr. Roger Campos is our host, and he's kind of the man in the background behind the scenes. Ms. Dalila Garcia will be joining us here shortly. And also, Mr. Israel Gonzalez, who's our director of bilingual ed, is with us tonight as well too, and he'll be helping with some translation as well too, Mr. Gonzalez.
Hola, bienvenidos.
Mr. Gonzalez, if you just want to give them a little bit of direction on kind of what the format is for tonight, and where they would be able to put those questions as they think of them, can you share that message with them first?
Okay, muy bien. Hola, buenas noches y bienvenidos padres de familia a nuestra junta sobre nuestro plan de este año. Estamos mejores juntos y más fuertes que nunca. El plan de COVID para el año 2022, 2021-2022. Este, la presentación de esta noche, los documentos y el video, la grabación de este video van a estar disponibles después de la junta en el sitio swisd.net. Si quiere ir al sitio, ahí va a estar la información sobre los documentos de esta noche, y como hayan cambios, ahí vamos a subir toda la información. También pedimos que si hay preguntas, este, que por favor las escriban en el chat y las contestaremos a lo más pronto posible durante esta presentación. Y si son preguntas que tenemos que, este, compartir con el grupo, así podemos también subir esa información al sitio. Y también otra vez, bienvenidos padres y comunidades southwest, y gracias por su participación esta noche. Otra vez, por favor, suban sus preguntas al chat.
Thank you, Mr. Gonzalez, and to the rest of our community likewise. I just want to share what our plan is for tonight. So we would like to kind of share some welcoming comments, and Dr. Verstappen will do that with us here shortly. And then we have our director of health services, Ms. Valerie Maldonado, who's going to walk us through our health and safety plan to start the year. And, and so we want to reiterate to the community that it's going to be a plan that is constantly being updated. So there are many things that are happening in the city and county and state around us. And so we want to make sure that we're taking all of that information into consideration as we plan for the upcoming school year. And so we will continue to update that information and share that with you all because we want to make sure that we're making the necessary adjustments as we go along, along with the information that we're receiving. So we're excited to share that information with you tonight. We know that you can have some questions. Please put those questions in the chat. We will be monitoring the chat so that we can grab some of those questions. After we finish with our presentation portion, I will grab some of those questions and ask those questions to our panelists. And our panelists will have an opportunity to give you some, some answers to some of the questions that I know that many of you all are, probably have some similar thoughts about. So we're going to go ahead and get started, and I would like to turn it over to our superintendent of schools, Dr. Lloyd Verstappen, sir.
Thank you, Jesse. And I just want to say good evening to all of our families who are joining us on this town hall. And, and before I even get to my comments, I want to thank our parents and our families for just your tremendous effort all through last year. You know, March 12th of 2020 came along, and this world pandemic landed in our backyard, and everyone had a pretty much turn on a dime. And, and if it weren't for that, the great relationship that we have with our families and, and the stewardship of our families to make that turn, our students wouldn't have been as successful as they were. And so we are fortunate to already have the one-to-one device in our district since 2012, and we're able to get those devices out and connect with the vast majority of our students and families and to do education differently. And then we went into the summer, and you guys repeated again this past school year. So thank you, moms, dads, grandma, grandpas, families, or everything that you do as we all kind of work collectively and through this time. And so I just like to start off by letting everyone know that the first day of school is August 23rd of the school year. That is the actual first day of students returning to school. We already have a number of staff who are in the district. We just finished day two of our administrative retreat that we do every year to work on mindset and to get our plans in alignment so that we can start off a very successful school year. I'd like our, our parents and our families to understand. And Mr. Gonzalez, if I need to stop at any point in time, you tell me so that we can make sure that you have an opportunity to speak as well. So going into this school year, I'm going to tell you today looks a lot different than it did in this past June. And so this past June, the COVID positivity rate was just right over 1%. Today it's 17%. We know that there's been more information that has been coming out on the variant and, and the enhanced numbers and, and the early warning indicators that we look at. And, and our director of health service, Valerie Maldonado, is going to have a chance to speak to our community and, and give that information here in a few minutes so we can share with you. Like our parents, to also understand that we are in constant communication and dialogue with our local leaders, with our local health leaders from all the major hospitals here, and our mayor, and our judge, and, and state leadership, talking about what does it look like for the 2021, 2022 school year? What safe protocols do we take? I want our families to also understand that we are operating under a governor's executive order that kind of limits some of the safe protocols that we had last year. They're going to change a little bit, but we're going to apply as many as we possibly can and work with our families to make sure that our students who do come in person come to safe environments that our families could trust and believe in. But it doesn't mean that there may not be spread of this COVID. We will continue to contact tracing like we've done. We also understand, we want our families to understand, we're going to give more information. We get information almost every day from Texas Education Agency, our commissioner, our state leaders about going into next school year. And the information we're getting today is a little different than we're getting in June. It's a little different picture. And so we're trying to be very patient in the communication that we send out to our parents because we, we don't want to send out wrong information and changes the next day, even though that probability does exist. Every time we send something out, it is subject to being changed depending on the landscape or what COVID looks like in, in San Antonio or in Texas or throughout the nation. We also have taken the opportunity to send 10 questions out to our families. Greatest response that we ever received back from our families. I believe we got over 2,000 in 24-hour period. That information is so helpful to helping us understand what we need to be talking about, what we need to be planning for, how do we support our families? How do we make sure that we bring some normalcy, but we're safe? And we understand that some of our families may be contending with chronic illness or long-term illness in the home, and there's some fear. So we are looking at, at some programs to make available to our families. We're not ready to announce that like completely just yet. But I can tell you what we're looking at is General Education Homebound, which is a program that we, that exists in school districts, requires a medical doctor to, to give us a certification that says a student will be out X number of days throughout the year because of a underlying condition or because of a health implication. And then we can work with those students differently. We also have begun the conversations about standing up a virtual program for our families, our students in some capacity. We have to comply with Texas Education Agency. And so we're working out, getting waiver approval and what we can do and what that looks like. We expect to post these things on our website by this Friday. And I say Friday, we have a big meeting with Commissioner Murath, our TEA commissioner tomorrow, and then there's another meeting Friday morning with local ISDs to talk about what each one of our backyards look like and how we're each working with our families to make sure that we can bring some normalcy. But we can also make sure that our families feel safe, they feel supported in that we are working in concert in supporting our youth, getting them through this time safely and on to the other side in the post-pandemic time. And, and I really believe that we can do that by working together in concert. I, I really believe that, I think it'd be really good for me to stop right here and let our director of health services, Valerie Maldonado, she has a presentation where we can share what we're hearing from our parents, with our parents, and we can share some of the safe protocols that we put together. And then we can kind of come back and answer some questions. We expect to communicate with our parents in the town hall format this week, next week, and the week after when we start school. So we want to stay connected in that sense. We'll be putting stuff up on our website. We'll be putting things in, remind our school announcements and, and making sure that you're getting the information. But right now, I, I feel we're like in a 48-hour window where we're going to get some solid responses back from TEA tomorrow. We're going to have some solid conversations with our other 14 ISD partners in and around the metro area of San Antonio and, and Bear County. So we'll share that information with our parents and with our students and with all of our families to make sure we're all doing what we can do to keep our kids safe, to make sure that we're preparing them for their future and, and work in concert and work collaboratively together. So let me stop there, and I'll turn it back over to you, Mr. Garcia.
So thank you, Dr. Verstappen. And so, parents, I see your questions coming in, and I, we're flagging them as much as we can here, kind of grouping some of those questions together. I think if we allow Ms. Valerie Maldonado right now to, to talk a little bit through the plan itself, I think she's going to answer a lot of the questions that you just had. And I know we've sent a few responses back to some folks. And once Ms. Maldonado finishes with her presentation, we're fielding, we're gathering some of your questions and putting some of those common questions together so that we can ask Dr. Verstappen, Mr. Gonzalez, I'm sorry, and Mr. Figueroa, and Ms. Maldonado, so that we get those answers for you as well too. And so, Mr. Gonzalez, before we jump in with Ms. Maldonado, do you want to give the parents just a quick overview of kind of what we shared?
Y padres de familia, como liderazgo aquí del distrito, estamos trabajando juntos con los líderes aquí de San Antonio de los diferentes departamentos de servicios de salud. Este, este plan que estamos presentando hoy y los planes para esta noche es información que nosotros estamos conjuntos trabajando en preparación para este año. Sabemos que hay diferentes cambios que se están tomando a cabo. Estamos bajo de la orden del gobernador y también bajo la información que se provee sobre la agencia de educación de Texas. Y con ellos también, este, son parte de este plan y la información que ellos, este, comparten con nosotros. Vamos a continuar de, a trabajar juntos para tener un plan mejor para este año. Este, los, todos juntos, como digo, esta información, todo va a estar presentado en el sitio del distrito. Ahí van a estar estas preguntas que están presentando hoy esta noche y la información que vamos a presentar hoy en estos pocos minutos. Vamos a ver que también va a contestar varias de las preguntas que están presentando ahorita. Muchísimas gracias.
Thank you, Ms. Gonzalez. So I'm going to go ahead and bring Ms. Valerie Maldonado, our director of health services, Ms. Maldonado. Can you take us through your presentation, ma'am? I'm sure there'll be a lot of answers to questions in that presentation.
Yes, of course, I'd be happy to. And Jess, were you going to pull up my presentation, or do you want me to share it?
I believe you can share it, Ms. Maldonado. I made that so that you can do it. Go ahead, Ms. Maldonado, you can pull it up.
Okay, if you all will just give me one, one moment.
That way you can paste it the way you want, ma'am.
Okay. Can you see the presentation view?
Yes.
Okay, great. So good evening, everybody, and thank you, Dr. Verstappen, and thank you, Jesse, for bringing us together to have this town hall and to really let our parents know what to expect. At least what we know of right now. As Dr. Verstappen had said, things are changing, and things are changing very quickly. But we want to let you all know that we have been thinking about what worked last year because we did a really great job. Our Southwest ISD community did really, really great. We had minimal cases on our campuses, and it was a really great year, given the fact that we were all experiencing a pandemic. And so we've learned what worked. We know what we need to do. And while some things are different because of the governor's executive order, we are still going to implement those safe practices as much as possible to keep all of our students and staff as safe as we can. So we are, we are better together and stronger than ever this year, and I really want to drive that message home. We will go over our current Bear County COVID-19 status, the parent survey results that Dr. Verstappen had mentioned. We sent out, we wanted to make sure we received feedback from our parents. So we will review that. We'll go over our COVID-19 mitigation measures as well as contact tracing, isolation, and quarantine, and what that means. So as of today, we know that things are, in regard to COVID-19, are, are getting a little bit worse in Bear County. We know that. We are now in a severe level, and these metrics are all found on the COVID-19 Metropolitan Health District website. This is what the county looks at to, to gauge the level of COVID in our county and city. And so I wanted to just share this with you so that way you know that we are definitely keeping an eye on this. Our positivity rate has actually gone up just today. They posted an update to this, and we are closer to 20%. And then at the bottom of my screen, you see different icons. And that again just tells us the level that we're currently at and what the city of San Antonio is looking at, right? They are looking at the number of cases of COVID, whether that's going up or down. Currently, it's going up, which is why it's red, the hospital trends, the average case rate, which has also increased, the positivity rate, which has increased, and the stress on our hospital and healthcare systems. And so we're keeping those in mind, but we know that our kids need to be educated, and we want our students back in class. And this is what we look at in order to think about how to really do that as soon as possible. So as Dr. Verstappen commented, we did send out a survey because we wanted to get to know what is it that our parents are wondering? What are their questions? What are their concerns? And what is their feeling overall? So we gathered some information as far as what campuses their children belong to. And you can see we got answers from all over the district, which is really great. And as Dr. Verstappen had said already, we received a large response in a very short amount of time. So we know that you all definitely are interested in knowing what we're doing. So the next question we asked was, do parents want to be notified if there is a positive case? And the vast majority said yes. So we are going to continue those practices, and we'll talk about that a little bit more. And if there are positive cases, how would parents like to be notified? So we, but the, the most response, or the largest response rather, was remind. Parents want to be notified, you have to remind, but also school messenger, letter sent home. And then some said, yes, we do want to be reminded with the COVID dashboard that we have online, which we will be tracking our COVID cases in the district again this year, and social media. Another question we asked is, would you like for students to continue to be provided free weekly asymptomatic COVID testing? So this was a weekly testing in which we partnered with community labs to test our students on a voluntary basis for COVID each week. And so we are planning on that to continue. As you can see, most of our parents do want that to continue. The next question we asked was in regard to masks. So Governor Abbott did issue an executive order that prohibited school districts from mandating masks in our school system. And we wanted to know if our parents were aware of that. And yes, many of you all are. And so then we also asked, do you plan to have your child wear a mask during school? And most, again, understand that masks do help to prevent the spread of disease. And so they are willing to send their, their children with a mask, and that is great news. The other question that we asked is, which of the following would you prefer for your student to have access to in regard to water fountains? Either water fountains or refillable water stations? Most stated they actually want access to the refillable water station. So that is definitely a part of our back-to-school plan. And then finally, we asked parents, would you prefer for parent meetings and events to continue to be on Zoom, Google, or in a drive-through format? And then we also allowed parents to submit another option. It was an open response, but as you can see, most did state Zoom or Google in a virtual format. At the end of the survey, we did offer an opportunity for parents to state what their concerns are. If you didn't ask the question, let us know what else you were thinking about. And so you can see the breakdown of what parents were wondering. If we are going to offer virtual campus COVID safety, masks, vaccination questions, questions about visitors and what the policy will be, our positive case protocol, the use of hand sanitizer, and transportation concerns. So we are going to try to address most of those. As Dr. Verstappen mentioned previously, we are definitely in a mode of involving changes in regard to our COVID response, just because we're waiting to see what guidance is going to come out. So just know that we are constantly keeping track of guidance and of what is best to implement for our students. That way we welcome them back to school as soon as possible. So in regard to masks, Governor Abbott did issue an executive order back in May. And so he basically stated that schools are not allowed to mandate masks, and masks would become optional as of June 5th. But Southwest ISD continues to recommend them and encourage their use. And we definitely appreciate it when parents send their students to school with masks. CDC does recommend that fully vaccinated and unvaccinated people wear masks indoors and in large crowds in order to prevent the spread of COVID. But again, we do not require masks to be worn. Vaccinations are a huge, a huge leading public health prevention strategy. And this really is an effort that we have taken a hold of and tried to provide as many opportunities as possible for Southwest ISD community. We know that currently in Bear County, 75 and a half percent of those who are 12 and up have received one dose, and 62 and a half percent have received two doses. So we're doing good, but people still need to go out and get their vaccine. Vaccines really can help us safely return to school in person as well as participate in extracurricular activities and sports in a safe manner. So we will continue to seek out opportunities for our Southwest ISD community to be vaccinated. We are hoping to have COVID vaccination drives in our district. And again, we will look for those opportunities and bring those opportunities to the district once the vaccine is approved for those who are under 12 years old. I know there were some questions about distancing. So we, we know that the CDC recommends distancing, and we are going to continue to promote distancing of at least three feet in the classrooms to the extent possible. We know that it may not always be possible, but we are doing our best to implement that whenever and wherever, wherever feasible. Other COVID safety protocols, right, are other measures that we had in place last year that we know definitely contribute to preventing the spread of COVID-19. We will continue to have those in place. Hand washing, that is one of the best ways to prevent the spread of illness and germs. And so we are integrating that once again into our curriculum, into our daily routine in the classroom. And we want to promote effective and frequent hand washing. And if our students are not able to wash their hands, we do have hand sanitizer stations throughout our buildings at designated locations. So that will be available to use as well. We will teach our students about respiratory hygiene and cough etiquette, covering their coughs and their sneezes, again, just to help prevent the spread of illness. All of these things that we do are layers, right? So that way we can do as much as possible to the best, to the best of our ability so that way we really minimize that spread and that exposure. Routine cleaning and disinfection protocols in our campuses. This will continue to be done. We will do cleaning of those highly touched areas, those areas that are frequently touched, like light switches, door knobs, things like that. We will continue with our disinfection protocols. Each of our campuses does have an electrostatic sprayer. So we can definitely implement those, those protocols that we know really helped. Again, last year when we were dealing with COVID, and they will help again this year. So we will continue those practices. Visitors in our campuses will be by appointment only for conferences and meetings. So if you have to go to your town school, please call first. Let them know that you'd like to schedule an appointment so that way you can go to that school, and they'll be expecting you. Students and staff with symptoms of COVID-19 or a contagious illness should stay home. We are asking that parents swing their children before sending them to school, before boarding the bus. If they have any symptoms of COVID-19, please keep them home. Call your doctor, call the school, let the school know that your child is sick. Talk to the nurse, and they can guide you through what to do next. But that again will help just prevent the spread of illness on our campuses. We talked about the weekly symptomatic screening for students and staff on the parent surveys. So again, we are planning for that to continue. And more information will be coming out about that as soon as we have those plans finalized. Parent notifications will continue to be sent out. When there is a COVID positive case, we will send out a notification so that way you all are aware of what is happening on the campus. Now, contact tracing in combination with quarantine and isolation has really helped minimize COVID transmission within our campuses, and that really helped last year. We know it worked. All of our Southwest ISD health services staff, our nurses, our clinic clerks really helped to keep our students safe in this regard. And they did an excellent job in contact tracing and guiding our parents and our students on what to do. So we will continue that process. Contact tracing is when we identify those who were within six feet of a COVID-19 positive case for 15 minutes or more, or those who were directly exposed to respiratory droplets. So we will continue to contact trace in collaboration with San Antonio Metropolitan Health District. Do ask, when we have, when we identify, rather, COVID-19 positive case, we will ask that person who they were around. And so anybody who is identified as a close contact, who was within 16 or 15 minutes or more, we will talk to them about quarantine and the amount of time they would have to do that. And quarantine really helps to keep a person who is exposed to somebody with COVID away from others, again, to prevent the spread of disease that can occur prior to them actually exhibiting symptoms, or even if they don't exhibit symptoms but end up wound positive. So we will implement a shortened quarantine period of 10 days. So if a person is identified as a close contact, they would be asked to stay out for 10 days from the last day of exposure or 17 with a negative PCR test on or after day five. So somebody can, if they were identified as a close contact, somebody can be out for 17. But on that 15th day, we would ask that they go and get a PCR test. And if it comes back negative, they would be able to return after that 17th day. And again, I know this is a lot of information. And again, I know this is a lot of information. Our nursing staff will definitely help guide you on when your child would be able to come back. What happens if they are identified as a close contact? The good thing is, those who are fully vaccinated without any symptoms, they don't need to quarantine. They don't have to quarantine, and so that is definitely a plus to go and get vaccinated because it really does help to minimize the risk. We will continue to isolate anybody who is COVID nineteen positive or experiencing COVID nineteen symptoms. So really isolation means keeping those people away from others. So a person who does end up having COVID nineteen is test confirmed to have COVID nineteen is considered infectious for ten days after symptoms start. And if they don't have any symptoms, it's from the date of the test that we, so we ask that they stay out for ten days either from the onset of symptoms, or if they're asymptomatic and they don't have any symptoms from the date of their test. And at the end of that ten days, if they have been fever free for twenty-four hours without the use of any fever reducing medication like Motrin or Tylenol, and they have an improvement in symptoms, they are no longer considered infectious and can return to school after that. We do have a COVID nineteen safety checklist that gives our Southwest ISD community a good overview of what it is that we're doing. So you will see those posted for shortly. This will be online for your reference. But we ask that our Southwest ISD parents, students, staff and community just follow these guidelines. So that way we could get out of this sooner rather than later. And again, things are changing. It is an evolving situation. And we will continue to review, adjust and communicate changes to our protocols during this time because of the nature of this pandemic. Just, that's all I have. Thank you all so much.
So, so Ms. Molinado, before I let you go, one of the most popular question I've gotten in the chat right now is will masks be mandated at our campus? And I know you covered that, but could you, could you mention that to our, our community one more time, please?
Absolutely. So masks will not be mandated in our district. And not because we don't want to, but because the governor issued that executive order stating that we cannot. We do want to encourage our Southwest ISD community to wear masks. We know that really helped last year, and it worked to minimize the spread of COVID nineteen in our campuses. So we definitely encourage our Southwest ISD students, staff, community to wear masks, especially inside our, our building.
And so I, for the community, we would greatly appreciate if any and all folks who come to our buildings wear masks and we'll have some signage up, asking folks to please do that. But we, once again, I'd like to reiterate, I know I answered many questions, a lot of parents here. The governor's executive order had specific direction on what we could and could not do with mandating masks, and so we can't. But again, we will highly encourage any and all folks who, who come to our buildings to please wear a mask. Mr. Figaro, I'd like to start with you, sir. I got a couple of questions I'd like to ask before we go to instruction. Another big question that we got in the chat are what precautions are going to be made to ensure safety on our buses?
Okay, so the first thing that we are going to undertake in same process that we had last year is we're going to do extensive training with our staff, so they're aware of what resources are available, what products have been FDA and EPA approved for dealing with COVID. In addition, we provide every bus driver aids with cleaning kits, sanitation kits that have supplies, that have PPE, that have a protective wear when cleaning the buses. We also will continue to have PPE available for students as they come on the bus. If the child forgets their mask, base coverings, we will have additional ones for that student to wear. Again, we cannot mandate it. We're going to encourage it and recommend the wearing of the mask. Every bus is also equipped with a sanitizer stations. We're going to encourage, just like the hand washing, we're going to encourage our students to utilize a sanitizer if they enter and exit the buses. To help with airflow, we're going to have our windows open as we did last year to allow and promote consistent and constant airflow throughout the bus. And one of the measures we took last year was to allow siblings seated together on the same seat. Well, right now, we are, one of the questions that has come up is are we going to be socially distancing on the bus? When possible, yes. When feasible, we will, we will social distance.
An additional question, sir, since we've got you on, we're talking about safety protocols and things that we will do. What type of cleaning, disinfecting, sanitation procedures are we going to be doing so that, so that we can kind of mitigate the spread of COVID in any of our facilities?
Okay, so let me go back to the bus, and there's one question that, that are one topic that I wanted to discuss. After our bus drivers have completed a tier, a drop off at a campus, they will go through a cleaning process, wiping down the seats, wiping down seat belts. A lot of our new buses, twenty eighteen and newer have seat belts, and those are, students are going to be required to wear them. So that's part of the process on the buses. In each of our classes, we have provided classrooms with the cleaning kits similar to what we have on, on the buses. They're going to have sanitizer, they're going to have sanitation wipes to wipe down manipulatives, to wipe down desks, the frequently touched areas. We're going to continue to, to train and, and ask our staff to do that on a regular basis. In the evenings, we do have our custodians that will continue the deep cleaning process using hydrostatic sprayers, again with FDA and EPA approved products to allow for the, the mitigation of the spread of, of the COVID disease or the COVID pandemic. PPE will be available, both face shields and face masks for both students and staff. If anyone is, forgets theirs or is requesting it, that's going to continue to be available throughout the year. One of the big mitigating practices is, as Ms. Valerie Maronado mentioned, was we're going to continue to educate and promote our students with hand washing, coughing etiquette, face protective coverings, the proper use of those. And we understand that our students haven't been, there's going to be many of our students that haven't been face to face throughout the last year and a half. And we understand during the first few weeks of school, as part of our weekly procedures, we're going to continue to have those lessons along with other lessons to promote and acclimate students back to campus.
Thank you, Mr. Figaro. I appreciate those answers, and we may circle back to you here as I scroll through a couple of more questions from the community. I'd like to go to Ms. Molinado, one of the other questions that we have, a very popular question is what, can you explain what asymptomatic testing is?
Absolutely. So this is the weekly testing that we implemented last year in partnership with Community Labs. It was a shallow nasal swab that was sent off to a lab. It was a PCR test, which is a test we do strongly encourage, sent off, and, and it was tested for COVID nineteen. And asymptomatic means basically was done in people who weren't experiencing symptoms, right? We offered it to all of our students and staff throughout the school year that were coming to school regularly and were not experiencing any symptoms at that time.
Thank you very much, Ms. Molinado. It's a very popular question. I think folks are just trying to get an understanding of what that may look like and what we've done in the past.
Interject really quickly, and more information will be coming out about the asymptomatic testing as we finalize those details as we get closer to the school year beginning.
Mr. Gonzalez, could you please, in Spanish, just provide the answer again as to whether masks will be mandated for students and staff? I want to make sure that we communicate that to everyone. It's a probably a question I've answered at least fifty times tonight, and I think we just want to make sure everybody's clear on that. Thank you, Mr. Gonzalez. Dr. Versus, so sir, we, we, one of the most popular questions that we're getting here tonight is whether or not virtual learning will be, or remote learning will be an option for parents next year. Some parents are concerned because they've got students who have underlying conditions, and some parents are just concerned with the current COVID surge. Can you help us with that question, sir?
Yes, I, I can try and just say what we know today, right? So what we've heard from our agency, Texas Education Agency, and our commissioner basically is that we're only offering in-person instruction. I, I'm, I think he's moved away from that somewhat over the summertime in the, the weekly meetings. And, and the information, I know that was a, a desire, I think our state leadership had. I, I, I think there, I feel in our meeting tomorrow, we're going to receive some flexibilities that we can offer things. I can tell you whether we receive them or not. We're going to continue here at Southwest ISD, working with our families and doing what's in the best interest of safety for all of our youth and, and for our families. So we are working on, on two things. One is getting that information or out on our website this Friday about our general education homebound program. If we have a specific student anywhere in our district who may have underlying issue, health issues that the family feels it's unsafe for that student to even take that chance to be in these environments, that we definitely want to get that student to that program, provide them continuation of services while at home. For our families and our youth who may not have a documented medical certified issue, but there may be other family dynamics where there may be a, a parent who is undergoing a, a medical issue right now or a grandparent in the home, and, and it's unsafe for that child. That we are working on creating a virtual environment for that family as well. We want to make sure that that student stays on time and progresses in their educational experience. If they elevated from one grade to another, that we want to provide them the support that they need, whether that be through technology or be a hybrid of some short face to face and technology. So we're working those things out. As I stated, when we started, those are two of the programs that we're working through. We're waiting for the commissioner's conference conversation tomorrow with all Texas superintendents and, and folks throughout the state. And our conversation with our local ISDs, so that we are working in concert as organizations and making sure that we provide all the opportunities for our families to feel supported, feel safe and understand that we're, we are on Team Southwest, I'm not on Team Texas. And so when we lean in a direction, we're going to lean in the direction of protecting our communities, our families, and understand that we have another spectrum of folks who want their children to school, they want to be there. And, and we want to address those needs and those desires of those families as well. And so, you know, we know there's a, a number of thought, and we know there's a, a different ideology. We want to serve our kids in an educational experience, keep them safe. And we also want to open up the doors for those families who want their, their students back in school as well. So I, you know, short, we're going to post information up on our website on Friday. That's going to be inclusive of addressing the needs of our students who may have underlying conditions and addressing the needs of our students who may live in a household who's having to contend with some of their health underlying conditions so that we can support all of them to the best of our ability, Jesse.
Thanks, sir. Appreciate that. Ms. Molinado, another question for you, ma'am. One of the questions that we're getting, is all Southwest ISD staff required to be vaccinated? And will students be allowed on campus if they are not vaccinated?
So, so the answer is no, vaccination is not required. Yes, students who are not vaccinated will be allowed on campus. That is, again, is not a requirement to come to school, either staff or students. We do encourage vaccinations because we know that that does definitely minimize the risk of not only getting COVID. It doesn't mean you cannot get it, you still can get it, but it definitely minimizes that risk. And it also minimizes the risk of having a severe infection and being hospitalized.
Good. Thank you very much, ma'am. So I'm going to open it back up to our panel, and it, and just if, if there's anything I've missed, sir, I think that we've covered a lot of the questions that were some of the more common themes amongst the community tonight. But Mr. Figaro, is there anything else that you'd like to add, sir, in terms of safety overall for the school district?
Yes, sir. Just to, as part of our protocol for coming back to school, we do provide that training to our head custodians as well, to ensure that they have the resources, they have the equipment, and that they have the support that they need to continue the, the daily practices of cleaning as well as the deep cleaning process that they do in the evenings at the end of the week. We provide that also for our child nutrition staff. We also provide that for our bus drivers and our transportation staff. So that is another thing that we're going to continue to do. We're always following guidelines and looking for the recommendations that come from the health authorities, both state, federal and local, to ensure that we have the best practices in place. But one of the questions that, that I did not touch on was, there was a question that asked if we're going to continue to use the plexiglass dividers within our campuses. We will. We will continue to use those to provide for wherever social distancing is not feasible. But in, in any need, any, you know, continue to do that as well as with the cafeteria. We're going to try to minimize the number of students at large gatherings throughout the day. Working very closely with our principals to ensure that they have the guidance and support that they need as well to mitigate any spread of, of the pandemic.
Mr. Gonzalez, I know you're still on with this, sir. Can you give us a quick review of what Dr. Versus had mentioned in terms of the options for virtual learning coming up for the school year, sir? Thank you, Mr. Gonzalez. Ms. Molinado, before we wrap up, ma'am, anything that you'd like to add, ma'am?
I'm, I'm just want to let the community know that we will place our COVID nineteen plan on our website soon. That will be on there. We also have some FAQ's that answer a lot of the questions that were asked today and some that were not. So please refer to our, our website for more information on COVID nineteen and our plan on welcoming our students back.
Thank you, Ms. Molinado. Finally, Dr. Versus, are there any closing words that you'd like to share with the community, sir?
I do. I want to clarify one issue when it comes, when we talk about the virtual learning venue, learning, you know, whether it be virtual, and I want to make sure that our concern, because we're hearing from the agency, whether we do it or not, has to do with you won't be able to collect ADA, which are funds that we collect on, on students. Our concern has nothing to do about ADA. We can, we can try the best of our ability to mitigate that. The concern and the question that we're trying to get answered from the agency and going through these meetings tomorrow and the next day is that if we do have a student in a virtual venue, that student technically doesn't meet the state attendance requirement from being counted present that day. So we're trying to work out with the state so that we don't put our students in a compromised position that they go into this virtual environment by the end of the year that we're not allowed to give them credit because technically they weren't here. And so I'm really confident, we're, we're working this out with the agency. They're going to give us that flexibility. So that's the flexibility that we're looking for with our students because of a underlying health issue in the household and the family feels this is the best and safest venue for them and the family. That we want that student to be able to meet promotion criteria by the end of the year, to meet credit accrual if they finish a semester after at the, the high school level. Those are the things that we're looking at. It has nothing to do with generating funds, and I just want to make sure that I And and I just want to make sure that I clear that up, it has to do with our students being able to meet, uh going to the next grade level, meet graduation requirements. And and stay on time to work to graduation. And so, once we can clarify that, we can come back with more information. Uh, but I also know it's the state's intent to to get as many students into uh school buildings as possible. And and uh, you know, I can give our community some idea, last year, um, we had our elementaries ranged. Uh, they're normally about seven hundred to eight hundred students, six hundred, eight hundred students in our eleven elementaries. And they range from uh at the highest peak sixty-five percent attendance, all the way up to eighty-four percent attendance uh at one of our elementaries. And the majority of them by the end of the year were all either approaching eighty percent or just right over eighty percent uh of students attending in person. Our middle schools were a a little bit less, they were in the the high forties, some of them over fifty, a couple of them encroaching sixty percent. Uh, in our high schools is where we saw the vast majority of our students uh staying in a virtual format in person. Uh, it went from the uh thirty to forty percent uh anytime during the year. Uh, but at any point, when you look district wide, almost fourteen thousand students. Uh, at our highest point, there was probably just right over fifty percent of our students were attending in person. And uh, I don't know if Val could add to this, but I, in all of our contact tracing, and we did have uh. Um, um, incidents of uh of COVID being in our district or at a a school. And we did the notification, uh, we kept our our tally up on our website to make sure we're transparent, informing our families uh about these incidents. Uh, when we contact traced every one of the incidents from last year, uh, there was not one that we could determine was spread. Uh, at the campus, uh, the majority of all of them, uh, were basically incidents of coming onto the campus. Using our mitigation protocols, using our our PPE, using uh our our quick actions. Uh, working with our families uh that we're able to really kind of make sure it didn't spread at school. Uh, put those students out for the allotted time necessary and bring them back uh into those environments. And so I just want to add that little clarity, uh, we will definitely, as we get questions from our 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 parents and our families. We definitely want to include your questions in our FAQs, so uh we'll upload them, provide answers to them. Uh, right now, it's all about providing information to to our families, to our students, to our youth, to our staff. And uh, making sure we we try to address the the issues that that everyone has. Uh, but we try to keep the safest environment as possible.
Thank you, sir, I appreciate that, and so I I I know we got a lot of questions into all of those folks who are logged in. And I know that we haven't been able to get to all of your questions, we've gotten hundreds of questions, and I don't think we've gotten to all of them. We do get a transcript of this meeting when it's over, and so I will go through and and cluster those questions into groups so that we can come up with answers for those. And so the next meeting that we have will share those, and plus we'll include them on our frequently asked questions on the website as well. And so uh if we didn't get to your question tonight, I I again, I apologize, there there were lots of questions, you all have some really, really good questions. And you know, between the the panelists that we have here, we were trying to answer as many of them as we could, but we will get to your question. Um, and I I'm going to put my email in the chat, and if you all have some additional questions that you really need an answer to. I would be happy to get those questions to the appropriate folks. Um, and so please send me that that question, I know there's a few folks on here said you missed my question, please send me those questions and we'll get those questions um answered for you offline. Uh, we know it's definitely important and you want answers to those questions, and there are, there are plenty of them. Uh, but we do appreciate everyone joining us tonight, again, this is not our last town hall, we plan to have another one next week. Um, and we're going to solicit, I would get some survey information from our parents as well, we may do one all in Spanish. Uh, we do appreciate everyone joining us tonight, we got almost five hundred folks here tonight. Um, and so we know that there's a lot of concerns in the community, there's a lot of questions that you have, and we're excited to get that information out to you all. Because we know that it's really important as you all are kind of planning for this upcoming school year, so please let me know, uh. Uh, i- if you have any questions for me, please send those to me, and and like we said, we will be back next week with another town hall. And hopefully we can have some questions to uh the more popular asked questions tonight, so that we can add to our uh frequently asked questions for everyone. So we want to thank everyone for joining us tonight, we will post this recording online. And we will be able to share some of the answers you have there, so you can go back and play it and check on some of those questions that you may have missed while you're typing some of your questions. So, once again, thank you to all of our panelists for joining us tonight, thank you to the community for joining us tonight, and we will see you again next week with some additional information. Y'all have a good night.